Lee Summit is your destination for big city vibes and small town charm. Head to the downtown Lee Summit Farmers Market where local meets fresh. Then grab a cup of coffee and discover a variety of shops and boutiques just around the corner. Continue the fun in downtown Lee Summit at a retro arcade bar. Discover your new beer at one of our six locally owned breweries. Cool off with some handcrafted cocktails at happy hour. End the night with live music and good company. Lee Summit, Missouri.
Hello, Lee Summit. I'm Laura Ingham and this is your flash briefing for the week of October 14th. City council meet for regular session Tuesday nights, six in council chambers and city hall. Meetings are open to the public or watch live on the city's YouTube channel. If you can't watch, catch the recorded meeting on demand on the YouTube channel or by subscribing to the Council Debrief newsletter, which breaks down three to four key agenda items. Subscribe at cityofls.net. The city invites the public to the groundbreaking of the Lee Summit Police South Substation on October 25th at 2:30 PM at 3650 Southwest Windemere Drive. The substation is funded through the 2023 No Tax Increase Bond and will provide basic police services, convenient reporting, and more interaction with citizens and businesses in the south area of the city. Recycle Fest is back on October 26th from 9:00 AM to noon at the city's main facility. Items accepted include license plates, cell phones, rechargeable batteries, wine corks, and even bicycles. Paper shredding will be available up to four grocery sacks. And booze, barks, and badges will also take place October 26th and downtown Lee Summit from 9:30 to noon. Families and their pets are invited to wear costumes and be part of a parade downtown. Following the parade, trick or treat at participating businesses. Learn more at downtownls.org. Thanks for listening and have a great week.
Have you ever been driving around Lee Summit and wondered what's that going to be? What's being built there? Wow, that went up fast. The Development Minute is here to help, highlighting some of the newest projects in Lee Summit, Missouri. Streets to West Prior is getting another restaurant on the north end. Chicken Salad Chick, a southern-inspired fast casual chicken salad restaurant, will open next to 30 Hot Bar and Grill, Magic Noodle, and Nick the Greek. The restaurant offer a variety of scratch-made chicken salads, pimento cheese, sandwiches, and more. It is set to open at the end of 2024. Summit Orchards is welcoming Salad and Go, a drive-through restaurant that specializes in salads, wraps, and breakfast. The Arizona-based restaurant sources fresh, natural ingredients for its salads, house-made dressings, and proteins. Salad and Go is set to open in spring of 2025. Summit Orchards is getting Andy's Frozen Custard. The quick-sir frozen custard-only chain offers a wide variety of custard treats like concretes, jackhammers, sundays, splits, malts, and more. Andy's is set to open in spring of 2025. Craft Putt is coming soon to Summit Fair. The locally-owned indoor mini golf bar and restaurant will feature two custom-designed 10-hole mini golf courses. The space will offer games, food options like tacos, burgers, and wings, and local craft brews. Craft Putt will open by the end of 2024. That's it for the Development Minute. For more about upcoming projects, visit cityofls.net.
Welcome to the Lee Summit Sign Department. We are going to walk you through our process from start to finish. We make signs as needed here. It's not like we just go out into the field and place a speed limit sign here, no parking here. Our traffic engineers, they go through and they'll do field studies. They'll send us down an engineering work order for us to go out, place new signs, or remove signs as needed. Coming from the material, our blanks come in and they're just aluminum blanks. We can put our white, our red, our fluorescent yellow-green, whatever. And basically what it looks like is just that there. Throw it up into the roller. And once we got it covered, take it to our work table here. And Tim will cut the corners, cut all the access off to where it's lined up right. As far as the plotter and the software that we use, there's a street name sign there. And he's going to go ahead and print that out on the plotter so you can see the plotter and how it operates and runs. There are standards for the height, even just on letters on the sign blank. Basically what we have on the computer there is it's pretty much set up to those. And it goes through, it's got a very small but sharp needle that goes through and cuts everything out, letter by letter. Once that's done cutting, our next stage would be bringing it over here. Currently picking out the sign letters right now. We call it weeding, or picking, or however you want to call it. Next, putting it on the transfer tape. Then after it's taped, we bring it over to the roller. That's where we apply it to the actual sign blank. And we'll roll it through one time just to get the air bubbles out. And the last stage is basically just taking the transfer tape off the front of it. And there's the finished product of a street name sign. We'll take you out to the field and show you our process that we go through. We're going to go out and follow our sign guys, get something installed for you. This is where we check our underground utilities. Tim, you got AT&amp;T?
AT&amp;T is back here.
EverG, Google, so we should be good to go. We normally put all of our stuff together out in the field. Then once the base is installed, we'll go ahead and put the post in there. We've come up to perfect. And that's how we do it. Simple, quick.
It's a member level. Thank you, Mayor. Great presentation, Ryan. Thank you. Is there any indicator that shows are we supporting a need?
You know, they talk about gym rats, kids that grew up with their dads that were coaches. Like, I was a city hall rat. My dad, Tom Lovell, was hired as the Parks Administrator in 1978 and spent 40 years in public service here in Lee Summit. I would go up on the weekends when he was working and I'd run around and play and do things. And I didn't know what he was doing at the time, but I just knew that was part of our weekend routine some days was to go up and hang out at city hall. Being part of a city from a young age to now in my adult life, you reap so many benefits from that. The people you know, you care more for something that you've been a part of. My wife and I knew we wanted to raise a family. Just trying to find a community that we thought we could raise our children in that was good to me. And it just felt like the right move is we were deciding on a city to come back to. Fortunate to have started a business in 2018. I founded Lovell Insurance Group, and we are a business insurance brokerage. So we help businesses procure insurance. Decided to throw our flag in the ground here in Lee Summit, and it's grown. I also have this passion for learning and curiosity, and I started a podcast series. So I really enjoy this opportunity where I sit down with business owners and tell their story. And get this out to other people in hopes that maybe it betters their life and gives them some inspirations. This is going to be a really exciting time. Obviously, this city is my blood. My dad's been a part of it for a long time, so I'm really excited. Thank you all. A lot of people would say I was crazy, right? So why do you throw your hand up and subject yourself to going into city politics? I think especially as I've gotten older, I just felt, you know, maybe a civic duty, like a responsibility to say, hey, this city's been great to me. Here's a way that I can give back and take some of my skills and put them to work for the people of this city. I wanted to bring a different maybe way of thinking and take some of my business acumen and see areas that it may apply to how we develop and grow this community. And just give a different perspective. One of our biggest challenges, but also one of our biggest opportunities is how do we develop and grow this community? We don't want to grow too fast, but we want to grow at a pace that helps support who and what we are as a community. So we've got a lot of opportunities, whether that be through development or parks. We've got a lot of land coming on board. So I just think it's important, like it's a challenge, but it's also our greatest opportunity. And so we just got to be smart how we do that. It's just asking some different questions. Like, I'm one that, I'm not contrarian for contrarian's sake. What I am is someone will tell me something and then I want to get to that position with them by just asking thoughtful questions along the way. And then if I can get there, then I feel like we've answered everything we can to move that forward. Versus, hey, here's kind of how we've done it. I'm never the, this is how we do it, this is how we've always done it, and this is how we'll continue to do it. All of my practical experience has put me in this position to serve. And I just raised my hand and said, I want to do that. Which I was elected on April 5th, 2022. I feel this obligation to carry this legacy that my dad did, my family did, and then giving my kids an environment to grow up in that makes them want to come back. My kids have started rec sports through the Parks and Recreation System. And I'm watching them play soccer on this sport field that my dad helped develop. And my dad's sitting there with me, right? I mean, that's just, that's the stuff that really matters in life.
Welcome, everyone. Would you please rise for the invocation and stay standing for the Pledge of Allegiance?
Heavenly Father, thank you for your blessings bestowed upon us as we meet together for our community. Give a spirit that enables us to convey understanding and goodwill. Help us to be alert and persistent when we make decisions that affect our citizens. Lend this meeting be effective and powerful. We ask that you bless all those in attendance and keep us safe. Amen.
Again, welcome, everyone. I'm calling to order the City of Lee Summit Regular Session number 18 as amended. Can I get a roll call, please?
Councilmember Hodges?
Here.
Councilmember DeMaro?
Here.
Councilmember Pryor?
Councilmember Shields?
Here.
Member Raider?
Present.
Councilmember Lovell?
Councilmember Carlisle?
Present.
Mayor Potem Lopez?
Here.
Mayor Baird?
Here. All right, the first item on the agenda is the adoption of the agenda. I have a motion to approve the agenda by Councilmember DeMaro, seconded by Mayor Potem Lopez. Any council discussion? Seeing none, please cast your vote. All votes are in, please record the vote. Passes unanimously. Thank you. And then next is the approval of the consent agenda. I have a motion to adopt the consent agenda by Councilmember Shields, seconded by Councilmember Carlisle. Discussion? Yes, Councilmember Shields.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wondered if someone on staff could just speak briefly about item 2B, 2024, 6525, the final development plan extension, just why that's on the consent agenda and what's going on there?
Good evening. Josh Johnson, Director of Development Services. So final development plans, although they're an administrative process and they're good for one year after they're approved, the city council right now in our UDO is the only mechanism for granting an extension. And we do that by a simple motion, and usually it is placed in the consent agenda when we do that.
Was there anything in particular that delayed this one?
Not that I'm aware of.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Seeing none, please cast your vote. All votes are in, please record the vote. Passes unanimously. Thank you. And then we have Council Roundtable next on the agenda. Items of general interest, things going on in your community? Yes, Councilmember Shields?
Thank you, Mayor. I had a couple of items. Myself and Mayor Potem Lopez both attended the Gin and Jazz Gala for One Good Meal. And it was a great turnout and wonderful event. Everybody in their best twenties attire and raising money for a good cause. So I wanted to recognize that organization. And then this Saturday is going to be the Haunted and Historic Spaces Tour in downtown Lee Summit. I think they still have tickets available to support our downtown. So hopefully folks will come out to that as well.
Excellent. Thank you. Okay. We have a couple of proclamations tonight. First, we'll do the Community Planning Month if you would meet me up front. And then we'll do World Polio Day right after that up front as well. There. You brought a nice crowd with you. Excellent. Whereas change is constant and affects all cities, towns, suburbs, counties, boroughs, townships, rural areas, and other places. Whereas community planning and plans help manage this change in a way that provides better choices for how people work and live. Whereas community planning provides an opportunity for all residents to be meaningfully involved in making choices that determine the future of their community. Whereas the full benefits of planning require public officials and citizens who understand, support, and demand excellence in planning and planned implementation. Whereas the month of October is designated as National Community Planning Month throughout the United States of America as an opportunity to highlight how planning is essential and how planners can lead communities to equitable, resilient, and long-lasting recovery. Whereas National Community Planning Month provides an opportunity to publicly recognize the participation and dedication of the members of the planning commissions and other citizen planners who have contributed their time and expertise to the improvement of the city of Lee Summit. By virtue of the authority vested in me as mayor of the city of Lee Summit, I do hereby proclaim October 24th, 2024, no, October 2024, as Community Planning Month. Can I get a hand? There's a lot of work that goes into community planning, and there are a lot of citizen boards. But it looks like you brought some staff here. Would you mind saying a few words and have everybody say their name and what they do?
Absolutely. So I want to talk a little bit, reinforce the mayor's proclamation a little bit. So we have a public process here as we meet every other month that I know excites everyone here. And really, there's four aspects to that process. There's the applicant that brings us projects. The public, which will testify on projects either for or against. Staff that were represented up here. It's comprised of planners and project managers, and I'll get to their role in that process in a moment. And of course, our city council, representing the citizens of Lee Summit. Our staff is comprised of planners and project managers. And I think at this point, I'd like you all to introduce yourselves. Adair doesn't look like she, this is Adair Bright at the end. She's one of our senior planners. We have Claire Byers, another one of our senior planners. Scott Ready, one of our project managers. Grant White, another one of our project managers. Ian Trefran, one of our planners. Mike Weisenborn, one of our project managers, 28 years at the city. Hector Soto, coming up, he's one of our senior planners, and he's been with the city 20 years coming up soon. 23, excuse me. And Shannon McGuire, our planning manager. Planners come to us with a variety of focus areas. Those include housing, statistics, demographics, and mapping, public engagement, transportation, land use planning, which usually plays out in the processes we see before council, and urban design. Our project managers act as a single point of contact with the public. Very important as we engage with our citizens, they have a holistic view of the project. And when somebody calls with questions on that, they're able to quickly get the answers needed. Long-range planning, that's best exemplified by our comprehensive plan. The comprehensive plan is the hub in the wheel of how the city has done a lot of its master plans recently. The Water Master Plan and Wastewater Master Plan were performed with the land uses in mind that were developed as a part of the 2021 Ignite Comprehensive Plan, as was the Greenway Master Plan and the Parks Master Plan. I've said master plan and plan a lot, excuse me for that, but I just want to emphasize the importance of this. And a lot of citizen engagement was done for that in 2020. So I also want to introduce, there was a Quad State Planning Conference about a week ago. Those four states are Oklahoma, Missouri, Arkansas, and Kansas. At that conference, we had submitted for an award of outstanding implementation for a program for our project management program. Grant and Scott there are holding the award. We were awarded that of all four of those states. As I mentioned, the benefits of our project management program, the experience represented in that program. It was an honor to get that award, and the biggest honor is getting to lead this wonderful team. So if I get a round of applause, thank you.
He didn't read that. He was actually, that was all right out of your head. That was excellent. It was amazing. I'm like, I can't do that. I have to have notes. And where do we have a borough in Lee Summit? Do we have a borough?
That's just something in that proclamation.
Very good. It was in there, so. All right, well, we're going to take a picture if you don't mind. Cheryl's going to take the photo. Hold on a second. Thank you all for coming. Appreciate it. It really means a lot. Thank you for all your hard work. Okay, I think we have members of the Rotary Club here for World Polio Day. Thanks for coming. All right. Yeah, you're a member of Rotary. Any other members of Rotary can come on up here. Where's, is Elam out there somewhere today? Come on, Fred. Trish? Excellent. Thank you. Okay, okay. Whereas Rotary is a global network of neighbors, friends, leaders, and problem solvers who unite and act to create lasting change in communities across the globe. Whereas the Rotary motto, "Service Above Self", inspires members to provide humanitarian service, follow high ethical standards, and promote goodwill and peace in the world. Whereas Rotary in 1985 launched Polio Plus, and in 1988 helped establish the Global Polio Eradication Initiative, which today includes the World Health Organization, U.S. Centers for Disease Control and Prevention, UNICEF, and the Bill and Melinda Gates Foundation, and is it GAVI? GAVI, the Vaccine Alliance, to immunize the children of the world against polio. Whereas to date, Rotary has contributed more than $2.2 billion and countless volunteer hours to protecting nearly 3 billion children in 122 countries. Whereas these efforts are providing much-needed operational support, medical staff, laboratory equipment, and educational materials for health workers and parents. And whereas there are over 1.2 million Rotary members in 36,000 clubs throughout the world that sponsor service projects to address such critical issues as poverty, disease, hunger, illiteracy, and abroad. By virtue of the authority vested in me as mayor of the city of Lee Summit, I do hereby proclaim October 24th, 2024, as World Polio Day. You brought a great crew with you. Would you say a few words for us?
My name's Kent Shawman, and I am the Polio Plus Chair for District 6040, which is basically northern Missouri. And on behalf of our Lee Summit Clubs, the district, and Rotary National, I want to thank the city for doing this for us. First of all, let's introduce each one of us and what company you're with. I'm with Callfelt Land Title.
Amy Chinnery Valmassey, future district governor.
Carl Chinnery, personal trainer.
I don't know how to top that. Jane Monroe, embrace the great beverage catering.
Dom Bennett, Lee Summit Water.
John Ellis, and I'm a member of Rotary.
Mark Dudding with the city.
Trish Carlisle with the city today.
Fred DeMaro with the city, and I'm Carl's personal trainer.
Just a little bit about Rotary. The Rotary started in 1985 to try to eradicate polio. It was one of their biggest projects ever. And all these years raising funds, we got it down to 12 cases last year, five in Afghanistan and seven in Pakistan in the mountains. Unfortunately, I just got the email yesterday. This year so far, they've had 28 in Afghanistan and 22 in Pakistan. So it was a little bit of outbreak because not being able to do the immunizations and that kind of thing. So we appreciate the city recognizing World Polio Day. And one of the big things we have fundraising, every hundred dollars we raise turns into $750 due to the matches the district, Rotary National, and the Gates Foundation does. So it's a big, big, big thing for us, and World Polio Day means a lot. So we appreciate it.
Well, I read these numbers every year and such, and I'm always amazed by them, still, every year. So thank you for doing a proclamation, though, and thank you for all your work with Rotary and such. Thank you again.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yep.
Okay, next on the agenda are public comments. We have Ms. Vollenweider here tonight.
It's going to be, we'll have to open up, let's do this one first. It won't be the entire thing, though. Teresa Vollenweider, 5201 Northeast Maybrook Road. This is going to be concerning police operations.
Basically, the long and the short of it is, is that she believes that she owns the road, what's underneath the road, and in the right-of-way. The city has said there's a 20-foot right-of-way. You do not own that. Everyone's told us, like, ultimately, I understand, like, a boundary issue is a civil issue. But she has been posting videos, she goes to the city council, has been in contact with the police. Last week, I talked to Officer Hurley. He stated, because she's been escalating, the city's aware, the police department, I guess, is aware. There are plans for this fence to be removed. There was no permit for working in the right-of-way. There was no, the people who put the fence up didn't have a license.
I've since checked a lot of companies, and a lot of companies in Lee's Summit don't have licenses. We'll go on to Iceberg's video where he speaks to Mullins. That one that I just played was very recent. This one is back from November 22nd of 2022.
So, this is what I need you to fill out. So you're going to have to print, allegedly, in black ink, don't worry about the event number, I'll put that in, last name, first name, middle initial. So when you have a right, like, that roadway, where that road comes through over there, probably even going over to wherever that dang little pin is at over there, that roadway, I mean, that's on her property.
On her property.
But of course, the city has a right-of-way on it for public use, so the public can use it, right?
Oh, I see what you're saying, yeah.
That makes sense. So she can't have stuff that's in that right-of-way that's for public use. And the city goes, finally asserted their authority on it and said, no, we're not going to allow stuff to be here.
Yep. You know what truly sad, too, and I mean this completely, is that I said to the city a long time ago, when this all, because I said, you better make sure that driveway can go there, because if it isn't supposed to be there, she is going to make our lives miserable. And I said, what if we just extended the driveway?
The volume got a little low there, but she's saying, I said to the city a long time ago, that if that driveway can't go there, then maybe we need to move it down. Well, they did move it down. But the question is, does the right hand know what the left hand is doing in the police department? Do they realize what Iceberg said that night? Does Stephanie Mullins realize what Iceberg said that night? Did she forget the other day when she called the police to say that I was trespassing? How many times do you get to cry wolf?
All right, thank you, Ms. Vollenweider. All right, do we have a couple presentations tonight? First one, the first one is for the, thank you, the first one is for the Lee's Summit Economic Development Council. This is a status report, request for extension of letter agreement, per basically a memorandum of understanding we had a few months back. So they've been doing a lot of work. Looks like we've got a few of the board members here, but Michael Van Busker, are you going to lead the way? All right, thank you, sir.
The board members in attendance can come down, feel free to, you don't have to be back row. Well, while Mr. Dunning's pulling up the presentation for me, I'll go ahead and start. I want to thank you all for the opportunity to be here today. I'm Mike Van Busker with Newmark Zimmer, but today, as a representative, as the new chair of the LSEDC. Really excited to talk about the progress that's been made over the last few months, which is quite a bit, and have a chance to address any questions you have. Thank you, Mr. Dunning. As you know, as you may know, next year, in 2025, is the 40th anniversary of the LSEDC, and I really do believe that we are setting the groundwork for the next 40 years of this organization, and really advocating for quality development, job creation, capital investment, and business retention. And I do want to acknowledge that a lot of work has taken place. There's just a few of the board members here with me today, but there's a lot of folks that spend a lot of time, some are here in the room and many that are not, and some of you are up on the dais, to get us to where we are today, so I want to thank them all. Also want to thank Teresa Evans, who has helped shepherd us through this as our interim executive director over the last many months. And lastly, I want to thank you, Mayor Baird, and city council, and many city staff who have helped us as we have really moved forward with the reset of this organization. So a brief recap, as you may know, as you should know, we entered into a letter agreement with the city on April 23rd. This was agreement between the city and the previous board, which set out some organizational goals, had very specific deadlines to be met. I'll touch on, there was phase one and phase two. The phase one programming, I'm very excited to say, all those tasks have been completed as of September 23rd. There was a lot of work to get to that point, and I'll touch on that a little bit. And then I'll also address the phase two requirements. This I'm pretty proud of. There was a big lift of the new bylaws. There was a task force that had some city representation, a lot of stakeholders in the community, and past, current and past board members, who spent a lot of time over many months resetting the bylaws. But at a high level, what's highlighted here, it really switched the board structure from a executive-driven board to a board, a board board. Set up requirements in regards to meeting attendance and things in that regard. It really was driven by the EDO's best practices study that you all commissioned, and we also reviewed bylaws of many other organizations to get to that point. But the other thing it did, expanded the board substantially. So now we have 20 members, we have non-voting members of stakeholder organizations such as the chamber, we have representation, expanded representation from the city, including some of the city council members, as you're aware. The new board is, this is half the board, as I said, we have 20 members now, but is represented here with the organizations that they do represent. Very excited about the openings that we had. We had four openings on the private side. We had a lot of interest in those openings, and was very excited when we were able to reconstitute with this board. And that's the rest of the board. So as you know, as a board, we've spent a lot of time, so I personally want to take this time to thank those that are here, and those that aren't here, who have been working very hard, because this is something that not one person can do by themselves. And by the way, Josh Johnson, I don't know how you do this without notes, he's not here, but I had to have notes, by the way. The first act the new board did was elect new officers. I was honored to be chosen as chairperson, I appreciate the opportunity to do this. Bobby Olmshipman with St. Luke's as vice chairperson, he had a commitment and couldn't be here today. John Ellis, who's here with us today, is secretary, and Jackie McCormick, who's here with us today, is the treasurer. One of the other things that the new bylaws did, they established a standing finance committee. So the board elected, of course, Jackie as treasurer leads that, and then council member Shields, and Doug Bates, who's with us here today, is on the standing finance committee. One of the other requirements of the phase one task was to implement programming. So annual meeting was held on July 24th, 24th. The program there was an update on the PRI SLR project that many of us in the room have been working on. We had about 130 in attendance at that, at that annual meeting. We've had networking receptions in June and September that have been well-attended. Our next quarterly meeting, by the way, is October 30th, which will be an update from KCADC, and will be a regional perspective brought back to Lee's Summit. So we've had some planning with them, Teresa Evans and I had some planning with them last week to get ready for that presentation. And then with the chamber and other community organizations, we'll be participating in the holiday reception on December 4th. The last big lift of the phase one task was sending out investor invoices. You think that'd be pretty easy, but we have limited staff, and I got to give Teresa and John and Jackie, for sure, thanks for making that happen. So those invoices went out on that September 23rd date. I believe Jackie, 90-plus, 90 what? 98 invoices went out on that date. So the funds on the private side are starting to come in. And in addition, I want to note that we've had, we have actually a waiting list of folks who are asking for information on how to become a member. So Teresa and I and some of the other board members are working on that, and then other prospects that have just came out of the woodwork as we've gotten more active again. So phase two's task, what was left, phase one had a lot, by the way. There was a lot that I just went through there. Phase two, when I got to phase two, I was like, oh, this doesn't sound too bad. Phase two is to do a visioning exercise with our community partners and stakeholders, and that includes reviewing our current vision statement, mission statement, and a statement of core values that support both of those. So that's the next task of our board to be working on. The letter agreement had a deadline. Jackie is very good at keeping me straight on these dates, but the original letter agreement had a deadline of October 15th, actually today. And the way we read the agreement, could have read it as phase one and phase two, but just to be safe, we said, let's ask for the extension to get time to do the phase two, which is outlined here. So that's what I sent you all a letter, the mayor and council a letter, on September 30th, formally asking for the, to exercise our first 60-day extension to complete the phase two task. Beyond the phase two task, what you see before you is next steps, and there's a lot, there's a big lift here that we've got to complete, and we all acknowledge that, and we're all ready to do it. So in addition to phase two, we're actively working for our calendar for events in 2025, as I mentioned earlier, the 40th anniversary of the organization. We're doing follow-up on the invoices that are sent to private members and working on collections as needed, as well as sending out information for potential new members. We're going to continue discussions regarding a PSA with the city. Our goal is to bring something forward to Budget and Finance Committee in November, and then hopefully, hopefully be before you all in November as a full council for consideration of that. We did provide an update to the school district, LSR 7, 60 days ago, maybe longer now, but we're, we have a draft agreement that we're currently reviewing, and we hope to go back before the school district in December. They have two meetings that we're kind of penciled in, that we hope to go back before them to, for consideration of an MOU with them. Another thing that we just started at our board meeting last week is reviewing the job description for the president of the organization. Obviously, that's a very important position, that we want to start that process as soon as possible. Teresa was kind enough to extend her contract with us through the end of the year, but I think her goal is to, is to retire, re-retire as soon as she can, I think she would state that as well. But as I said, she has been very, very helpful in keeping us to this point. So the job description review is currently being done by the board. I've asked the whole board to review that and have comments back to us by the 23rd of this month, and then we'll have discussion of that at our next board meeting in November. In addition, this didn't make the slides, but at our board meeting last week, we reviewed the, an update, update to the confidentiality and conflicts of confidentiality and conflicts of interest policy, which there had been one previously for LSEDC, but with Jackie's efforts and input from the board, we've revised that. And the next thing that we are taking on and will bring forward for consideration at the next board meeting, if we stay on current schedule, would be a code of ethics policy, which the organization had not had previously, but we've been reviewing some of our peer organizations and actually reviewed the city's code of ethics policy, and we'll try to bring some of that all together into a document to bring forward to our board at the next And the last thing on that slide, by the way, is staffing. As I mentioned earlier, we have a part-time staff at this point, so we are looking at opportunities for using outside help, if needed, to fill needs, to keep our organization moving forward. So with that, I and any of the board members in attendance are happy to answer any questions.
All right, thank you. There has been a lot of work going on behind the scenes, I know that, being on the board, get to hear about more of the details, but let me see what council members, what questions or comments they would like to make, so, thank you. Council member Shields?
Thank you, mayor. How has the response been from the investors so far? I think last time we spoke, the invoices just gone out, they're just trying to be received, so how many of them have responded or actually sent in?
So I know our collections currently are at just over $20,000, the last I checked. Now that was as of Friday. And we do, did also have three new individuals that we sent out invoices to within the last week, so individuals who weren't previously members but have requested membership, so there's some interest in new participation as well.
And the memorandum of understanding with the school boards, assuming those are eventually approved, those are at a level of $25,000 for Lee's Summit?
The Lee's Summit is 20, and then the Blue Springs is a little bit lower. It's not, it doesn't have quite the level that, I want to say it's $4,000, but...
Okay. I was probably just adding those together in my head, so, I appreciate that, helpful to see where the financial position's at. I don't really have any other questions since I've been at your meetings, so I've been familiar with the process. I do appreciate, and want to state again for my colleagues, I appreciate how much work the board has done to reorganize itself, get the new bylaws, start moving forward on all these action items, and proactively reading that letter agreement, making sure that you're hitting dates and asking for extensions on time. I think just that level of communication is really appreciated, and it feels like there's momentum to move forward now, so it's really good to see, so, thank you.
Thank you, appreciate that.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Van Busker, do you have, on phase two, can you go back to phase two? Yeah, there we go. So that's, this is the next phase, right, that we're entering into?
Correct.
And so... And so does the agreement say that we, yeah, okay, that's right. It does. It says that we need to do the vision statement, mission statement, and just simply a statement of core values. So we're not doing a full, full, all, all-out strategic plan.
Correct.
So that we're not throwing something together on the fly.
Yes.
But at least establishing the core values and mission and mission statement. So do you think we'll be able to work on that the next couple of months?
I feel confident we can. And actually, I had kind of the same thought process when I first thought about the agreement, looked at Phase Two. I thought that was, we had a lot more to do in Phase Two. But I feel like this is something we can do, accomplish within the 60 days and have this done before the end of the year. And when we come forward with the, the proposed PSA, you'll see some other deadlines that we've created for ourselves that we'll obviously want you all to review and provide input on.
It just gets tricky once you hit December.
I know.
Trying to get people there. So, but we do have a bigger board for that, for that purpose, to be able to still have effective meetings.
Yeah. And I, I really liked that the expanded board has a lot of these representatives of these community partners on the board. So it's.
Yeah. Would you mind expounding on that just a little bit? Because we do have this, this, just so many different perspectives. Have you noticed, I mean, how do you feel about the meetings? I mean, you're the, you're the chair, I know, but you're, you're front and center.
Well, I will say that the, the meetings have gone very well and have had a lot of input from all the board members. I really like the fact that we've got this mixture of not just city representatives, but our community partners. So the chamber, downtown Main Street, the new DMO, Rachel Dyer is the DMO representative, by the way. And then all of our education partners. Laurel Hoag, who's, I thought, oh, she is here. Laurel's in the back. Laurel was actually on the board previously as a private board member. But with our new structure, there's a standing member for UCM, for example, and she, she stepped into that role. And then, of course, Dr. Buck with the school district and Dr. Jerome have been, have been great. So yeah, I feel like the board meetings have gone very well.
Ryan Kreider with MCC.
Yep, I'm sorry.
Ryan Kreider with MCC.
Yes, thank you, Ryan. Thank you.
Yep. Okay. Very good. Okay. Got a couple of council members waiting to speak. Councilmember Hodges.
Thank you. So I'm curious, do you know about timeline for getting a president in place? What does that look like?
If I knew that, I would tell you. But I do think we don't want to rush into anything. I can tell you in other organizations that I've been involved with and EDCs I've been involved with, I've been on the board, sometimes those processes have gone very long. So this is a very, very important person that we hire. And there needs to be a community buy-in to that person. Now, with that said, if there's somebody that, that we all, you know, that we come across that might be a perfect fit, I'm not opposed that it could happen very quickly. But I think the most important thing is if you think about from a hiring process, I'm going to be reaching out to people and our board's going to be reaching out to people. I've got to give them some continuity. And so some of that continuity comes, for one, from the investors and the, the funds we're going to receive from the private side, but it also includes continuity with the city, with the PSA being in place, and then the school districts as well. So I felt, I mean, I'm biased, obviously, as a local, but I feel like this is a great opportunity for somebody. Yes, you, you're starting to reorganize, reorganize this organization, but we've laid all the groundwork. And if you look at what's happening at Lee Summit, the opportunities that are before somebody to step into this, I, I think there will be people interested in, in the job.
So do you guys have a plan in place? If it should take a long time, what that looks like for LSCDC? Like, are people still going to be actively trying to find businesses and draw people to Lee Summit still? Or is it going to be no president? We're just sitting ducks here and possibly missing out. So what does that look like if it does take longer than you would like for it to?
When, when we come forward with the, with the proposed PSA, part of what we put in there is a continuity of operations plan. And I can tell you that the board, members of the board are reaching out to resources that can help us as needed. There are consultants that are available to basically help step in and, and help staff an organization like this. So that's something that we are discussing and will be bringing up to our board at our next meeting.
Okay. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Demore?
Thank you, Mayor. Mike, you pretty well answered my first question. And I understand that. I mean, it's, it's all right now in, still in planning. That is the president and the search for the president. But my second question was going to be, the invoices that went out, is there a due date on them? I mean, are, what is the length of time it's going to take for those 80, I think, I think Jackie said 88?
I think she said 98.
88.
98.
So 98 invoices originally went out. What we did for the invoicing structure this year was we invoiced as of September 23rd. And those invoices are good for all of the rest of 2024 and all of 2025. So technically speaking, those are your 2025 annual dues. But it, it enables anyone who pays between now and then to also obtain the benefits for the remainder of 2024. And that would include for the right investment levels, tickets to the luncheons, those sorts of things. So technically speaking, they are 2025 dues invoices. We, we intentionally tried to be a little bit flexible because we recognized that not having billed in over a year, there were some folks who probably hadn't budgeted for their invoices to be received and that they might be waiting for another fiscal year, those sorts of things. So what we're trying to do is, on an as-needed basis, when we're communicating with those investors, work with them. You know, if we need to make partial payments, you know, whatever we can do. But technically, they're 2025 invoices. They're, they're allowing them the opportunity for the benefits for the remainder of 2024.
And, and you guys are on a calendar year from January to December?
We, we did, technically, no. We did invoicing this year with that intention. Previously, and I was not on the board previously, so Teresa might have to correct me, but I believe that there were about a third of the investors that had a January billing date and two-thirds that had a July 1 billing date. We technically have a July 1 fiscal year. So our fiscal year matches the city's fiscal year.
The invoices are staggered then. Okay. All right. Thank you, Jackie.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Mike. Thank you, Mayor.
Councilmember Demore, I will say that when those invoices were mailed out, they mailed one to my company, by the way, to our downtown office. And so I was kind of watching to see when that would show up. And I know what day it was dropped in the mail. It was, it was a week and a half before it showed up on my desk in downtown Kansas City. So I approved that, the invoice for my company last weekend and, you know, it got paid. So I, from a timing perspective, I'm not worried about it. We've had several groups that have reached out and asked for updated information they need to, to pay the invoice. But I, I feel pretty confident that money's coming in. And Tom Jackson, who's on our board, has been great with Central Bank. I got a little smile out of me at our last meeting when, when Jackie said how much money had came in. Because up to this point, we've just been watching money slowly, slowly, slowly go out. So it's pretty exciting for us.
Thank you. Thank you, Mike.
Thank you. Well, it has been nice to see the progress these last few months. So just, you know, on behalf of the council, thank you for putting that time in, the board members and the, especially the executive members. Because I know that it's supposed to be more of a, like, board run instead of executive member board run. But a few tasks have fallen upon the executive committee. So you've, you've done extra work. And we need that right now. So thank you very much for that. And then we'll just, we'll, can't wait to see these core values and mission statements and see where we end up with the billing after a couple of months here, as people get towards the end of the year. So, all right.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Yep. Thanks for coming tonight, everybody.
Mayor Baird?
Yes.
I think it'd be appropriate to take action on the request for extension by the, by the council if somebody wanted to.
We need to take action on it? Are they just?
They've requested the extension. I think it'd be appropriate if you granted, if, if it's the desire of the council, since it's a letter agreement, kind of documented.
Councilmember Shields?
I would offer a motion to approve the requested extension through December 15th of 2024 for the Lee Summit EDC to complete their Phase Two tasks.
Do you have a second? Councilmember Carlisle seconded. Councilmember Shields made the Not seen any discussion. So that's usually a bunch of yeses. So please cast your vote.
I'll tell them.
I'm just telling them, you know, I've been doing this a little while. It is unanimous, 7-0. Thank you again, and look forward to the next one. We have another presentation tonight. This is a presentation on the council retreat we're going to do this weekend. It's an overview of key information. Mark Dunning is going to make that presentation.
Thank you, Mayor Baird. Mark Dunning, city manager. I think it would be helpful, not only for you, the mayor and the council, to kind of revisit some of our high-level guiding documents that we use here as an organization within the community, but also remind the, the community and our community partners about these key documents. And so my, my hope tonight is not to do a deep dive into any one of these plans or strategic plan and things of that nature, but to hit a Cliff Notes version of this so that it's somewhat fresh in our minds as we go into our strategic planning retreat that we've got scheduled. I'm going to start with, you just heard the, the EDC talk about vision, mission, and values. And quite honestly, about the only time you see us as staff bring this forward on behalf of the organization is through our, through our budget process. This is good to revisit to remind ourselves what is our vision as a community. And this vision statement was set as part of our strategic planning process, which really was established by the mayor and the council at the time. And as you can see the statement there, I think, you know, it's a statement that's always striving to be better, a continuous improvement statement that we never fully realize when we get there, right? There's no finish line. So we're always working to, to pursue our vision. The mission statement is, was developed by us as an organization, the city. And I think that mission statement speaks to the approach that we take as an organization in the services that we provide to the community. You see the three Cs there. I remind our staff about this very frequently: collaboration, creativity, and commitment. That's the approach we take to our work in delivering services. And then the values there, SIS, stewardship, integrity, and service excellence. So that's speaking about what we feel is critical, important, as we perform our work for this community. And these lead to public trust as we, as we go about our work. So I wanted to start with these high-level. This came from our strategic planning process back in 2019. So I'll, I'll move into our strategic plan. It's safe to say that the, I guess I should say that the plans that I'm referring to here is our strategic plan, our comprehensive plan, and there's an implementation plan that goes along with our strategic plan. So what I'm pulling up here is the Cliff Notes version of our strategic plan. This strategic plan and our comprehensive plan are significant for this community. Extensive community stakeholder input were put into these plans. And so it, I refer to it as our community strategic plan. And from that document, there's seven critical success factors. And these, these areas of focus, I'll call them, we had objectives and other, and action items and things within that framework to move forward. I will admit we don't visit this often enough. And we don't use this often enough as an organization, as new initiatives come about. How does this fit into our strategic plan? Should we be putting efforts towards this? So we can be better at that. I'm going to own that as the organizational leader. My goal here is not to go through each one of these critical success factors, but this is the Cliff Notes version. As we think about our work and the services we provide on the, for the community, do they fit within this framework? Now, having said that, I think it's also safe to say that it's not just us as a city that are carrying forward these initiatives. I'll move now to our implementation plan. So this is a key document that I carry with me everywhere as a framework for the work that we're doing on behalf of the community as we move the community forward. What is connected to those seven critical success factors in our strategic plan is our implementation plan. Again, another plan, or it's, it's an, well, it is a plan to implement the strategic plan. And as you, as you look at this, you might remember some of you that were part of the process, C4. So our community partners, we just heard from the EDC, we're going to have a DMO now. We've got downtown Main Street. We've got the chamber. They have a role to play in some of these strategic planning initiatives that we'd like to move forward. Our citizens, our boards and commissions, the city as an organization, the mayor and the council. We all have efforts that we can put forward to moving, moving the strategic plan forward. So I'm scrolling down here to help you understand what this looks like in, in a, in a format. And it does have within it the seven critical success factors, objectives, strategies, action items, who's taking the lead for these different action items, who's a partner in those efforts. So we've got the framework there. We just haven't leaned on this heavily enough and, and talked about it enough. So that, to me, this is a critical document that we should have at the forefront as we go into our council retreat to establish goals and priorities. So that's kind of the, the bundling Cliff Notes version of our strategic plan, vision, mission, values. Right behind our strategic planning process that was done in late 2018, into 2019, and into COVID, it was very challenging, we did that. On the heels of that came our comprehensive plan. So I'll pull that up now, just a visual to show you, okay, what are the seven plan elements related to our comprehensive plan? You can see them here and they align, I think beautifully, with our strategic plan because we did the strategic plan first. The plans are different intentionally. The, the strategic plan is intended to be five to seven years. What do we hope to accomplish in what areas? Comprehensive plan is different. A comprehensive plan is more of a 20-year outlook. It's a vision for the future. I always say, what does Lee Summit want to be when it grows up? That has a lot to do with these plan elements, quality of life, resilient economy, what types of housing, what kinds of transportation. So this is, you can say a comprehensive plan is more towards land use and development, but it's more comprehensive than, than that. And hanging on, on the comprehensive plan, I think I put in your packet, a lot of other master plans, Greenway Master Plan, Transportation Master Plan, that hang on the comprehensive plan. So it's a very, very deep and large document that guides us as an organization as we facilitate decision-making and bring information forward for you to consider, especially in the development review process, but in many other initiatives that we bring forward as well. So this is a key document, too, the Cliff Notes version. So those are key documents that I think will be helpful as we go into retreat, planning retreat, knowing that those are truly community planning documents. Extensive stakeholder input was, was put into those. And from that, the, the hope is that out of this retreat, that for perhaps over the next year or two years, we can narrow that focus for us as an organization, for our community partners, other stakeholders, education partners, figure out what do we want to put some focus to and really make some good things happen, knowing that, yes, we could try to make all things happen, but it's going to take a lot of time. And if we narrow that focus a little bit, we can really make a lot of things happen. So that, that's really my presentation here. Happy to answer any questions. We'll come prepared with staff. And of course, we have loads of knowledge within our departments of all these plans, ready to help craft out some priorities for us as an organization and all those involved in moving this community forward. So happy to answer any questions, Mayor.
Okay. Questions for Mr. Dunning? Councilmember Shields?
Mayor, so I know some of this was, like, the Ignite Plan was one of the first things that I was involved in when I got elected to council since it was 2020. So I was sort of new councilmember drinking from the fire hose. And not going to lie, didn't have the understanding of the city that I have now. I'll put it as nicely as I can. Can you talk a little bit about what the process was that we went through to make that? Because you say extensive community engagement, but I remember even in the middle of the pandemic, we were doing all kinds of virtual Zoom calls with community members. It was, and it was not just members of like our partners. It wasn't like just downtown Main Street, but it was like any citizen that wanted to get involved could be involved with those as well, right? Can you talk just a little bit about what that was like?
Yes. Once we, once, so I use the term extensive intentionally, right? It wasn't a closed-door invite-only type of opportunity, very transparent. And, and we broke those groups into these seven critical success factors so that if you had a certain area of interest, you could go to that meeting. So numerous meetings held. When I say community partners, citizens, stakeholders, business owners, certain sectors of the business community, all were invited. And they were large groups that were in facilitated discussions. We worked a lot in tabletop exercises. And then we'd report out and we'd capture what the consensus was. So it was a phenomenal process. The Zoom meetings got crazy, yes, but we still powered through them and found ways to, to keep moving the ball forward. So having been involved with that, that was a very refreshing process to hear all voices with their ideas on, on the strategic plan and likewise on the comprehensive plan.
Yeah, I just, I really, even though it was a challenging process to do over Zoom in the middle of the pandemic, I, I appreciated it that it gave so many different ways for people to give input and that, you know, it's easy to look at something like that and feel like this is just some consultant that, you know, put this together. But it really was collecting all the really was collecting all, all these voices from our community and trying to figure out what, what we as a community want to achieve. And I know some of it can feel really broad, you know, what does multimodal transportation opportunities mean? But it is kind of this overarching vision for where we're going, like, say, over the next 20 years, so something I probably should review again, but I, I think it is really helpful to think about what members of our community really do value and what they want to see us do and how we can be, you know, we may not always agree on how to get there, but it's good to think about, you know, what, where are we trying to get to? So I appreciate that.
You're welcome. I would offer the, the summary, summary report for the strategic plan is a very refreshing read. It'll probably take you about 20 minutes, and, and it collects a lot of that stakeholder input that makes you say, gosh, we're in an awesome place and we can do awesome things together.
Is that something you'd be able to, is that, is that linked in our packet?
It is linked in the packet. So yeah, that, and that kind of explains a little bit of the past, too, on some of the key decisions that were made in the past that helped us in today's world be as successful as we are, so.
All right, thank you. I do want to kind of point out the, the comprehensive plan was the harder one to do because it was during 2020 mostly. We did all those Zoom, and it was a grind. The strat plan, though, there was a lot of in-person meetings in 2019 and, and the, that winter and before, before COVID hit.
Yeah. It, it, it was probably more on the implementation steps that we were more into those Zoom meetings, but we were powering through.
Very good. All right. Any other questions, comments? All right. Thanks for the presentation.
You bet.
Looking forward to it. We'll keep going with our meeting here. We've got a couple of ordinances. Proposed ordinances, first reading. Councilmember Rader, would you please read Bill number 24-184?
Thank you, Mayor. I move to advance to second reading Bill number 24-184, an ordinance approving the execution of the funding approval agreement and between the City of Lee Summit, Missouri and the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development for the 2024-25 Community Development Block Grant Program Year.
Thank you. Motion to move to second reading, Bill number 24-184 by Councilmember Rader, seconded by Councilmember Hodges. Discussion? Seeing none, please cast your vote. All votes are in, please record the vote. That passes unanimously, thank you, goes to second reading. Councilmember Shields, would you please read Bill number 24-185?
Thank you, Mayor. I move for second reading of Bill number 24-185, an ordinance determining and declaring the necessity of acquiring for public use certain real property, permanent easements, and temporary construction easements for stormwater attention basins, additional infrastructure facilities, and other public improvements, and all work incidental and subsidiary thereto associated with the proposed East Fork of Little Blue Watershed Stormwater Project authorized in City Manager and his designated to negotiate for the purpose of acquiring the necessary interest in land and authorizing the City Attorney and his designated to institute condemnation proceedings if such interest in land cannot be acquired by purchase through good faith negotiations.
Thank you. We have a motion to move to second reading, Bill number 24-185 by Councilmember Shields, seconded by Councilmember Carlisle. Discussion? Seeing none, please cast your vote. I need one more vote. Thank you. All votes are in, please record the vote. It passes eight zero, thank you. And then we will go to committee reports. Committee reports. Yes, Councilmember Shields?
Thank you, Mayor. The Rules Committee will meet Thursday at 11:30 a.m. via Zoom. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember DeMaro.
Thank you, Mayor. We had a Public Works meeting yesterday and a legislative and intergovernmental relations, but the, the Public Works, one of the highlights on it was the GMP for the, for the Joint Operations Center, we, so we, council. And then on the legislative and intergovernmental, intergovernmental, we, we honed down with a few cosmetic ideas with the, or issues with the 2025 legislative priorities. So that will be coming soon. Counsel, thank you.
Thank you. Any other committee reports? Council comments? Councilmember Rader?
Thank you, Mayor. I want to share some thoughts with you which were a result of the comments shared with me from Lee Summit residents as well as my own as a longtime resident of Lee Summit. Lee Summit is and will continue to be the largest and fastest-growing city in the Midwest. We have spent a lot of time and effort making the name of Lee Summit stand, stand out in this region, and we are considered a destination city because of the forward thinking of the leaders of our past and our present, as well as the purposeful initiation of the strategic and comprehensive planning of our city. As we all know, in April 2023, the citizens of Lee Summit passed a bond to expand our beautiful airport, to offer more services, build, build more infrastructure with the building of Hangar Two, adding more private hangars, and expanding the overall future of aviation in Lee Summit to meet the demands of the business and corporate travelers, attract new business to our city, and partner with LSR Seven to create an aerospace academy with the goal of creating careers for our youth. These are the goals put forth for our Lee Summit Airport. I and others truly believe a better course of action would be to use our focused financial resources and energy towards stepping up and expanding the branding of our airport to the Lee Summit Regional Airport. The Lee Summit Airport is something that I and many of our residents are very proud of, and I believe that we can accomplish the same initiative to, to continue to grow our airport customer base and further become recognized in this region and throughout the country if we focus on what has made us so special, so unique, and so highly sought after. I believe that it is important to expand the name Regional to our Lee Summit Airport, calling it Lee Summit Regional Airport, rather than completely removing the name of Lee Summit from one of the greatest accomplishments that we have here in Lee Summit. Thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Shields?
Thank you, Mayor. So there is a park in my neighborhood, the Williams Grant Park, that has been under construction for quite a while. The playground is done. It's amazing. I take my son there to play all the time. It's very popular with the neighborhood, and there are many times when I have heard families in that park saying, huh, what's going on over there behind all the orange fencing where everything is all boarded up? I wonder what will go in there. Will it ever be done? And sometimes I try to explain about the city approval process and why that isn't done yet and why they're still waiting on plats and easements and building permits and forgets occupancy. But I feel sort of ridiculous explaining to this, this to them since it is a city project for city residents waiting on city approval to get done. And I would appreciate if staff would correct me if I'm wrong, but I think that's what's going on there. And I want to know, is there anything that we can do to speed this along, to get this project done for the residents? Right now, I, I understand holding ourselves to a high standard, but right now, it's what you call an attractive nuisance, that little kids want to get in there and play with the plywood and get through the fence, and it's just, it's not adding any safety to our community waiting to get this paperwork done to be able to install the structure. So I wanted to ask about that project specifically. And then maybe more generally, are there some policies that we could change to help speed along city projects that are waiting on city approvals? Should, I don't see why we hold things up that are just waiting on ourselves to, to approve. So, thank you.
Well, I'll take a stab at this, and I'll, I'll see if, if there's any holes that I leave that maybe our planning and, or development services folks can add to this. So I believe what we're talking about is a shelter structure at Williams Grant Park. And just to get a little background, so we as the city hold ourselves accountable to the development standards that we expect of the development community. So we treat ourselves no different than, than the development community. And when we, when we, when we go into constructing structures on property, that's where you mentioned plating, right? We need to minor plat that property. It's never been platted, minor platted. And in, in order to get a temporary certificate of occupancy or a certificate of occupancy, it's an administrative process to get that done so that we can issue those TCOs or CFOs. So that's, that's a little bit of the hang-up there, and, and we're holding ourselves to that same standard. Acknowledging, though, that that, those efforts are fully within our control, I'll use the term "our" being the city and parks and recreation, to make those happen. So that's a little bit of the, the background. With respect to what can we do about that, it's, it's a UDO provision that we as staff don't have the ability to waive. There may be ways that through CEDC, we can craft policy, guidance, things of that nature that would give us as staff that ability to do that. Certainly, Mayor, you and, you and the council can direct, direct us as staff to take actions. You have the ability to, I'll say, relax some of those provisions. No, similar, in the similar environment is how we grant modifications to UDO provisions, things of that nature. So that ability exists. But, so up to this point, we've held ourselves to that same standards. That's why we're in that situation. Now, I believe that that minor plating process is in obtaining signatures, so the end is near, that we've, we can take that construction fencing down and fully open that playground. So I'll stop there. I know enough to be dangerous. See if I've missed any, missed any key points here, Josh.
Josh Johnson, Director of Development Services. The only thing I would add to that is, beyond it being like a policy, it's actually a statement in the UDO that the city will follow these same processes. So as Mark mentioned, yeah, it would take some sort of action to craft that in a different way to say, not a free-for-all, of course, but that we wouldn't follow some of these requirements.
Thank you. I appreciate that feedback and, and glad to hear that that's in hopefully final stages that, what I had heard previously a couple of months back was, oh, we're going to be ready for a beautiful ribbon cutting in September, and obviously that didn't materialize. So I was like, well, I feel like it's time to say something, and I'm glad that it's moving forward. I would love to see this assigned to committee for some more discussion, that I understand why we'd hold ourselves to those standards, but I think it's worth really thinking through why we do that, that there are things like, with a development that's not run by the city, that we want to make sure that all the requirements that we have for it get met before we let them have a CO and use it, because otherwise there's not the motivation to, to do everything that's yet done. But I feel like as a city, we can kind of trust ourselves to make sure that a plat gets filed eventually and that kind of thing. So I wonder if it wouldn't make sense to give ourselves a little bit more flexibility on some of that. I don't know if that's something that would be assigned to committee for discussion.
I see the Mayor Potem writing it down. Yep. Thank you. Any other comments? Staff roundtable?
Couple of celebrations that we've had recently, and they feel it's important to mention these, that they relate to a public safety sales tax and a no-tax increase bond issue project that we're working on. Live burn facility out at Station Seven. We did a ribbon cutting for that on October 10th. That was funded through the public safety sales tax. So now our, our firefighters have an environment where they can experience what it's like to be in an actual, more like, an actual fire. So thankful for the, for that, that improvement to train and equip our firefighters with the best training that we, that we can. And then on the, the following day, on the 11th, there was a beam topping, we call it, over here at the Green Street Market Project. So beam topping, what that's referring to is structural steel is complete for that building, and you kind of put that last beam in place. In this place, in this case, it was a plate that was there with acknowledging that milestone for that project. So good things happening on those two fronts. Looking forward then for a groundbreaking for the South Substation, you should be receiving information about a groundbreaking for the conversion of the old Fire Station Five into the South Substation. That'll be on October 25th at 2:30. So good things happening. We're moving forward on a lot of those initiatives that the voters entrusted us to make happen, so wanted to share those, those milestones with you all. Thank you.
Thank you. We have one more item of business, but we have to do it in closed session, so would, Councilmember DeMaro, sir? Would you please read us in the closed session?
All right. Thank you, Mayor. Pursuant to Section 610021 of the Revised Statutes of the State of Missouri pertaining to legal actions, causes of action, litigation involving a public, public governmental body or any confidential or privileged communication between a public governmental body or its representatives and its attorneys, I move for closed session.
Second?
I have a motion to move into closed session by Councilmember DeMaro, seconded by Councilmember Shields. Discussion? Seeing none, could I get a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember DeMaro?
Aye.
Councilmember Shields?
Aye.
Councilmember Carlisle?
Aye.
Councilmember Pryor?
Aye.
Councilmember Lovell is absent. Councilmember Hodges?
Aye.
Councilmember Rader?
Aye.
Mayor Potem Lopez?
Aye.
Mayor Baird?
Aye. Everybody have a good night.